Okay. Please stop on the order on March twentieth, it is six thirty P M. Everybody in the audience, can you please silence your cellphones? And I'm sure I saw you all signed in at the order there. And I'm gonna have everybody stand until they pledge their allegiance.
It's written in the papers. To the life of the United States of America. United States of America, where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for all.
Alright, so tonight, we have three appeals to hear and decide whether to grant or deny the request for our bearings based on the established zoning board laws. Of the time manly enough. First, did everybody get a chance to take a look at the meetings? Um, anybody got any changes recommended?
Madam Chairman, can I make a motion to approve the minutes from last month? I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Alright, eighteen minutes have passed. The legal notice for tonight's agenda has been published to notify the general public of this meeting. May I have a motion to waive the reading of this publication and all in favor?
I make a motion to waive the reading of the publication, sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Okay. At this time, I request a motion to open the public hearing on the first item on the agenda. Um, which is the two eleven Churchill Lane, um, from Joyce Springs. Can I get a motion?
I will make that motion, I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright, this is Joyce Springs, come on up, come to the podium, speak, um. Try to speak loud, we're gonna melt the owls.
Actually, she's got her microphone there, so she'll be the best bird, okay.
Oh, awesome. Can I run this hall with me? Um, what you'd wanna do, uh, with the property and reasoning?
Um, so currently, we have, um, a back patio off of the back of our house that had, it's a concrete slab. And it just has a, a slight shed roof on it, and we would like to turn it into a screened-in porch.
Okay. Um. This is, the property is the same thing, had a front porch. They enclosed, there's two other houses that have come before us as well. Um, and a concrete slab.
Uh huh.
Is that within the variance?
Yes.
Okay. Alright. I understand we can talk about two other. So there was two other properties in Churchill that came to us at the past couple of months to put front porch bearings.
Oh, okay, um, oh, I don't know if you remember that, but this is in the backyard. This is in the backyard, yep, yep, so screened in, so the patio, it wouldn't change the size of the existing pad that we have. Um, that's gonna stay, the structure is the same, but we just would like to treat it as.
And this is just a side area.
Correct. Need eleven feet. And we'll need a variance of nine feet.
Nine feet.
They have eleven feet for that, nine yard, or nine feet for twenty foot yard. Is there gonna be a pre-season room, four-season room, any electric going into there, do you know?
No, no electric going.
No. Anybody else have questions?
We have sliding glass doors, so those will stay.
Yep.
And you've got a roof that slopes down, roof height will be the same.
The roof height will be a little higher.
How much higher?
So, uh, let me see, I've got a.
That helps.
Behind you. Yeah.
Would be the same height as what's existing there already?
So, no, it would be, it would be a little bit higher, so I'm trying to see if I've got that written down in here, so. If we see. The current height right now is eight three. At the highest point.
At the back of the, the.
Correct.
Porch.
Correct. And if I'm looking at what I have on here, I know I have a lot here, see. Sorry, I'm not seeing it on there.
Ten feet tall.
Thank you.
So two more feet.
So how is the, how is the roof going to meet up with the house roof?
As a, as a shed roof, exactly the way it is now, but just higher.
You're just gonna raise it up so the roof of the house slows down.
Raise it up, so, correct, yes, yes.
In front of that pit of wood.
Not with the proposed rafters and beam he has, and then the, and then, no, I'm gonna use this. And then, this portion of it right here will essentially bear down onto the exterior wall.
Right.
And will all be supported through there, and or the, um, board would bear onto the rafters of that. Which would then bear down onto the exterior wall.
With that pitch, could we have a higher risk of the ice standing?
Do I have a what?
So, like, when, when we get to that one, like, we had a couple weeks ago where the ice stands up. That'd be my only concern, the pitch right there, but. We're not, yeah, no, no, I was just thinking.
Yeah.
It's a.
I'm not treating it there.
Yeah, of course.
So, we don't get, because it's an outside, we don't get any ice buildup on that at all?
Okay.
Um, I, I clean it off anyways, just for safety reasons, but we don't get any ice buildup at all.
Okay, not that it affects the variance one way or another, it's just curious.
Okay, just thinking about the pitch.
Oh, yeah. Claire, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Alright, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? I'm sorry, before I do that, anybody in the audience would like to speak? Anybody online? Yep, alright.
Hold on, I'm sorry. No, doesn't look like anybody.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Second. Clear seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Alright. Have a seat. Um, we're gonna discuss, uh, a little bit, and then we're gonna go over the secret question, the same question. Okay, the secret questions, the criteria questions that you've answered, okay, so any discussions? So, the concrete slab. Is, is without, without, explain to me Tom, also needs the variance, and that's what's needed?
We typically don't, with concrete or pavers, require a permitting or approval for them similar to that of. If they were to do like a gravel or stone back there.
Okay.
But the, since the structure's going onto it, I'm counting that as essentially just part of that structure, so if they ever remove the structure. It's there, that gravel, that pad would be there similar to that of any type of other landscaping that you'd be able to put into your, on your property.
Any special points? So I'm gonna go over the criteria questions, only five. Um, I will ask the five questions to the board to determine whether the variance request is in balance with or a detriment to health and safety of the neighborhood. The first question, one of the benefits the applicant can be achieved by some other means, is there another way to achieve what you would like to do?
No, there's just a.
No, Claire, it's the most cost efficient, yeah, to do that.
So, it's a no? Okay. Uh, I'm a no as well. Uh, will this variance cause an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or the nearby properties?
No, no.
No.
Nope. Okay, so, I mean, anything, it'd be a little bit unapproved. I don't know, maybe. Is the request substantial? So we're asking for nine feet for the side yard.
It's almost.
I was gonna say.
It's the variance twenty, they need nine, so it's forty percent. But it doesn't really matter, I mean, but the concrete slab is already there.
Right, are you putting a window on the side?
We're just screening it in.
Just screening, you're just screening it.
My answer's no.
No. No. Uh, whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects on the neighborhood or surrounding areas.
No, no.
No. Um, it won't have any physical or environmental effects, it's just, we're putting a concrete slab and screening it in. One of the need for this variance is self-created.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay. Um. Okay. Z B A, after taking into consideration the above five factors, find that the benefits to the application does outweigh. The detriment to the neighborhood or community, or does not outweigh the detriment. Does not weigh. It does not. Yeah. Applicant. The benefits to the applicant is not outweighed the detriment to the neighborhood or community, and therefore the variance request. The benefits to the applicant, the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community. Yeah, it does outweigh.
Yeah.
This is the one.
Yes.
So does anybody wanna, the Z B A further finds a variance for. For two eleven Churchill Lane and a minute, uh, for nine feet is the minimum of variance should be granted in order to preserve and protect. The character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. The Z B A can further grant the variance request of the following, is there any conditions? Before we think. Oh, there's an agreement, there's no significant impact on the environment, therefore I oppose a type-two action on seeker, and no further review is required. Based on our discussion with anyone, would someone make a motion to grant for them a variant for this applicant? Okay.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion with the zoning board to grant an area variance to Joyce Springs. Property located two eleven Churchill Lane, April York, one three oh six six. Ax map I D zero nine six point dash zero six, dash zero six point zero. Variants being granted for the purpose of permitting the construction. Seventeen foot by thirteen foot screen porch, ten foot ceiling. And. Granting. Variance of nine feet to provide relief from the required twenty foot side yard setback.
Aye, sorry, I have a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, Tom, can I review, you're approved? So, Tom, we're gonna do.
I'll send you a email tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, we're done, we're good, you are all good.
Good morning.
Thank you. Carrie, I think we, I would like to move, I don't know if this is okay, with the action item number six, move up to five, because I don't go with the. The, that, is anybody, this gentleman that's online, there is online for, um, Meadow Drive. Okay, so we should go to five, he is online, okay, I apologize, I didn't see him, I looked for.
I just gotta figure out which one to pick.
Okay.
Just gonna come up, oh.
I did, I didn't think he was on, so that's good to know. Okay. This is Meadow Drive.
He had sent me an email that he.
Hello?
Ready? Alright. Okay.
We hear ya.
Alright. Alright, at this time, I request to make a motion to open the public hearing on the, the, uh, second item on the agenda, no. That's his item, on the agenda, uh, for property at twelve Meadow Drive. Um, I get a motion?
I think so. Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Alright. So, Mr. Gorman, uh, will you please tell us what you would like to do and the reason?
I think that is.
I'm sorry, that was online.
Contractor.
A contractor, okay, not Mr. Gorman. Is Mr. Gorman?
Yes. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah. Yes.
We can hear you.
You can hear me, okay. Alright, uh, this is Lawrence Cle with Aris Luxury Residences on behalf of, uh, Ian Gorman. Uh, presenting, uh, an addition that we're doing, uh, Ian came to us, wanted to do a. Uh, master bedroom suite in his house, the house was built in nineteen seventy-six. Uh, is in desperate need of an upgrade on finishes and, and whatnot. Um, but what we've found was that the best way to do this was an addition. Now, we have a forty year yard set, or a forty foot setback from old East Ike Way. And from the front yard there on Meadow Drive. So, we were challenged a little bit to get this addition to squeeze between the existing pool and the existing forty foot setback there. Um, currently, the house is sitting at thirty-nine point two feet from old Dyke Way, old, old East Dyke Way. Um, we're proposing that it sits. Uh, let me get back to that, thirty-seven point three feet, so. We're asking for a difference in, in where it sits in, in relation to old Dyke Way. Um, by, uh, less than a foot from where it's, it's sitting now. Um, old East Dyke Way is a dead-end road there, the school sits behind him. Um, and we proposing some screening along with the addition to, uh, help screen that from the neighbors. And, uh, yeah, the, we wanted to go through and kind of update the finishes on the house. Um, give him a master suite that he could then grow into with his kids, um, he's looking to stay in this, this house long-term. And wanted to make it, uh, more, uh, I guess suited for, uh, more modern, uh, type of living. So that's kind of the gist of what we're doing, we're, we're matching finishes, um, to what kind of is there, we're doing clapboard and, uh. Um, board and batten, and, and along the front of the house, it's an, it's an existing just straight ranch, you know, very monolithic roof. Uh, so what we're planning on doing is trying to break that up with a couple of little overframed dormers. Um, these are just really to kind of break up that roofline and then tie into the, the addition as far as like the finishes we're, we're doing. Um, so it's kind of, you know, a, a facelift for the house, a facelift for the neighborhood. Um, and also, um, an expansion that gives him what he thinks he will need for the future, um, life of his family.
What was that?
No, this is a different plan.
I was just.
So there's no kitchen or anything, it's just a bathroom suite back there?
That's correct, that's correct.
That was the question about the, this dwelling unit, it had, okay, so it's just the bathroom. It'll last the rest of the house, the color and everything?
Yeah, the color may change a little bit, um, but, you know, we're probably staying in the earth tone family, um, not trying to do anything, you know, like a bright pink house or anything like that.
We appreciate.
Yeah, and then you're, you talked about proposed foliage.
Yeah, so on the site plan, you can see, there's, there's several, there are five trees shown there. There's already an existing tree line that runs along that road there that comes back to almost the, the, you can kind of see it in the site plan there, yeah. There's a lot of trees that are there now. But, um, we would, and, you know, kind of infill, if you're looking right here at this picture that's on the screen, so there, see that pine tree right there? The addition would be going back from the house where it's at, and we would add some more pine trees and, you know, move that fence and stuff for the addition. And really kind of screen that in from adjacent neighbors.
You guys have questions? That was all I had.
Um, proposed mudroom?
Uh, the proposed mudroom, so there's an existing screen porch there right now. Um, we're looking to enclose that under the same footprint. And create an enclosed mudroom for him to come in through the garage into the kitchen. So it, it's a clapboard siding to match what's there. Um, it's really taking what's right now and enclo, uh, the open, um, screen room. And enclosing that with some windows and a door.
This case, all that matters to us is the better condition, because that's the.
I wasn't looking at that, Claire. I think I was just so focused on the other side. Okay, you have any other questions for Mr. Cle?
So the fence around the property, that's not affected, that stays?
Uh, the fence, so if you, you see the site plan there, the fence will probably go back further into the rear yard, you can see on the existing site plan. It comes from an angle and goes to the corner of the house, we would bring it right to the back of the addition, so. In essence, that, that front yard becomes a, a vegetated, uh, you know, kind of screening buffer zone, and the, the enclosed backyard becomes at the back of the addition.
I don't know if you can see the red dot.
Yes.
Um, one thing, do you have anything else on the fence, 'cause that. With, with the proposed fence, they, the property owners are aware that the doors that lead out into the pool area are gonna have to be alarmed. Because that's an entryway into the enclosed pool area, so need, that door will need to have a U L two zero one seven alarm on it.
That's correct, and we're, we're looking to replace those doors going out the back as it is, so we would put the. Um, required by code alarms on that and the master addition doors going out to the backyard.
So are they gonna put new fencing up and replace what's there?
No, just, it, it would be the same kind of fence, like a chain link fence, but it, we, we would just relocate the fence. Instead of leaving it at the corner of the house, we would bring it back to the corner of the addition.
Does anybody have any inside questions?
Turn my papers. Anybody in the audience, Jamie, you have any questions?
No, uh, the only thing I, I would say is that, as you're contemplating, uh, this, and if there's going to be conditions. Um, that the applicant has, um, stated that this is not going to be an accessory dwelling unit, I think there should be a condition about that. Because there is different criterion, and we don't usually say that, but this, it, it looks like it's something that could become an accessory dwelling unit, so I think that should be. Part of the conditions, um, to the extent that this board thinks that the screening is critical to the variance request. Then, uh, you would have a condition in there, uh, that the screening shown on the site plan, uh, is, is a condition. So that, that's just my suggestions as you contemplate the criterion.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Alright. Is there anybody online that has any input before we close? Yeah?
So, the addition, it looks, I'm going between the papers here. Um. Actually, two questions, it says crawl space.
No, there's just two things, I'm looking at it, I don't wanna pull mine out either.
How high off the ground is this gonna be, just like the house?
Yeah, it'll be matching the elevation of the first floor of the house, and, uh, he, he did not feel like he needed, um, extra basement underneath there, so. We would be stepping up the footing from the existing foundation to just create a crawl space underneath there for. Any mechanicals and whatnot, they would have to get into the addition from the, um, main house.
Well, the, the one I'm thinking is, you know, if you're gonna have a bathroom back there, you gotta run water, I was wondering how that's gonna get back there.
Um, it, it would go through the crawl space there, and we would be insulating the crawl space as well as. Um, it would probably be a, um, conditioned crawl space for, for that. You know, we would have insulation going down the walls. And under the slab, uh, within four feet of the, the foundation, so they created a, a thermal envelope will go down into the crawl space.
The other question I have is, on this proposed addition, where it looks like you have. The, uh, the right term, covered porch. And that covered porch touches the, the. Pool, uh, the surrounding, the, uh. Patio around the pool, is that correct?
Well, it's a, it's actually a patio with a, with a, um, trellis above it, it's not actually covered.
I was just curious as to why the addition wouldn't be moved. In.
Oh, it's the trellis.
I see that, okay. I was just curious as to why that would be moved in towards where the pool is, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't need that extra variance.
Yeah, the part of it, part of it is the, the way that the addition marries up to the existing house, um, we were, we were challenged with the roof lines kind of combining. Um, as well as, uh, you know, we wanted to have the space around the pool for people at the pool, enjoying the pool. And then have this separation from the pool, so the, the, uh, porch was the solution for that. And it, it's really tight from the pool to the edge of that patio. Um, the patio around the pool, it's about six feet, it's not very deep at all. So we were trying to again, create a little bit more space away from the pool and, and have some, be able to get some landscaping around there and.
Thank you.
Do you have any concerns with this stuff?
No, the only thing I have is, and it's been addressed, um, the fencing, but. If he's not gonna, I mean, I don't think there's a, a way. That would look good, where you could have the fence go between the house and the pool to separate it, and it is allowed to have the door open into a direct, into a pool area, you just have to alarm it, um. And then, no, otherwise, I've worked with them, uh, before, so I'm sure we'll be able to, as for all the marrying of everything and. The existing and the new, we should be able to address it in an appropriate manner. It does look from the elevation though that. There should be plenty to work with going this way, 'cause. There is, how, from, how far, I guess, this would probably be the best way to look at it. It's a, the recourse is a block up from grade before you hit the sill plate. I can work with that with construction, we'll be able to build it, or they'll be able to build it, and I'll make sure it's right. I don't have any concerns about building this.
Claire. Alright, can I get a motion? Anybody online beside Mr. Cle? Alright, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that, I'll second. I'll just pass the moderation to you.
Okay. Slow down. We're pretty active. Um, alright, we got a second, all in favor?
Alright, aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, good, okay, so let's discuss. Um, what do you think, any feedback, comments? I think the conditions of the shrubs and also the condition of not being an accessory dwelling.
So, my question on the A D U is, Jamie, how would you word that, just maybe that. It remains as proposed and there's no addition of a kitchen or something to that effect?
I would, I would specifically say that, um, at no time would, is this property going to be utilized as an accessory dwelling unit. And I think that should cover it. It, if it had a kitchen in it, um, it, it probably would be considered an accessory dwelling unit, it, it doesn't, so. You know, but you can't, uh, always control what people have in their hot, in their houses, right, or what they do later, so. How it would be enforced, I don't know, but at least it would be there, should a neighbor complain.
Could the definition of accessory dwelling unit change? Which would change, which would necessitate us wording specifically for this application?
Not based on the way that Tom Board made the law.
Yeah, there's a definition of it already, mm-hmm. And that.
And that was a.
Well, I'm not gonna say it's never gonna change, but it's in the books right now.
Okay, right, wasn't that a New York State definition too that they used?
Say that again, Tim?
Yes, wasn't that a, like, it was a, it was like a definition with precedence that was.
Oh, right, right, yes.
In New York State, we meant it.
I feel like for the A D U definition, there was something, but we added other things in there afterwards for the A D U over law.
Alright, any other questions before we go to the criteria? Alright, so the first, uh, whether the benefit, we're gonna go through. We are going to, the five asked by criteria questions to the board to determine whether the variance request is in balance with or is a detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the community. Uh, first question is, whether the benefits of the applicant can be achieved by these well alternatives to the variance?
Yes.
Yeah.
If they make the addition two point three feet smaller, then they wouldn't need the variance.
Just why ask about the porch?
Yeah. Um.
That's undecided. It wasn't affected.
Correct.
But I see what you're saying. I see why you asked. It makes sense.
You can make it smaller. Right, the actual addition.
Yeah.
Um, Claire. You agree? Whether undesirable change can be produced in character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties?
No.
No. Um, whether the request variance is substantial? Two point eight feet? No? No?
No.
Okay. Whether the variance has an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
No.
No? You blend in.
It looks, it just, yeah.
Okay. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created?
Yes.
Yes. So we had two guesses and then three answers. You want to discuss earlier? Jamie? You're muted.
Am I there? And what, it, uh, you could have one criterion in favor and, and grant the variance. So it's, it's not a, an issue of, you know, like, if it's not gonna affect the neighborhood and that's the best criterion and all the rest, you've answered, um, you know, in the positive, you can still balance and grant the variance.
Okay. All right, so, thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
There's an agreement that there's no significant impact on the environment, therefore I propose a type two action on secret. No further review is required. Um, based on our discussions, would someone make a motion to grant or deny an area variance for this applicant?
Did, uh.
Yeah.
Did you consider the criterion of whether the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment?
Oh.
Because that's, that's the, that's the clincher, right?
Okay, the CBA act taking consideration the above five factors binds the benefit of the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Jamie.
You're welcome.
All right, then I'll reread this. There's an agreement. There's no significant impact on the environment. Therefore, I propose a type two action on secret and no further review is required. Based on our discussions, would someone make a motion to grant nine area variance for this applicant?
I'm trying, I'm gonna make a motion to grant the front yard setback variance of two point seven feet to E and Dorman for the real property located at twelve paddle drive, Pittville, New York, one three zero six six, tax paid by the zero nine four dot dash zero three dash one four dot zero. Uh, this variance is being granted for the construction of a nine hundred eighty-two point two square foot addition with the variances, or with the, uh, conditions to, um, maintain the shrubbery, uh, for covered, uh, and additionally, uh, at this time.
For the site plan, Tim, for the site plan as presented.
As presented.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And at this time, the property cannot be used as an accessory dwelling unit.
At no time.
At no time.
They would have to come back to the board if that, if they wanted to.
The last condition is to ensure that the, uh, property, uh, has the compliant, uh, warnings for, or alarms for the pool.
And you said you know, and you know the variance you didn't say.
I didn't. Yeah. Yeah, I wasn't gonna name off the compliant door code, same though the Tom did, and it's be similar in all of this house. Yeah. Which that was, that was in the proposal. So just, but yes, that the, uh, the color and roof appearance of the addition will be mentioned in the airhouse. In first place.
I, I second that motion. All in favor?
All right.
Hi, anybody opposed? All right, motion is granted and Tom will connect with you, Mr. Cley. Thank you very much for coming to the meeting.
All right, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
All right, now. Yeah. We have one more. At this time, um, we have the number six item on the agenda that I would like, um, a motion to open the public hearing. I second it. All in favor? Hi, anybody opposed? All right, this is an all with come on up. Am I saying it correctly? I'm a bit dirty a little bit, aren't I? Sorry.
It's pretty close. It's no opposed. The reason appear, um, previously we, uh, looked at it, put an addition on the house, one was decked. What we lost in that dish, uh, was, uh, what we looked at, I'm sorry, is a proposed garage to the left of our, uh, driveway, if you're looking at the house. Uh, originally, we were looking at a twelve by twenty-four garage, but with space limitation, we're, we're just in that to a twelve by twenty. Uh, we had, uh, when I was here before, we were looking for a, uh, new, survey thing, uh, new survey with the proposed garage and the, uh, telephone pole where that was identified. It submitted that to you guys, uh, what, unfortunately I didn't at the time, but, but proposed, uh, shrubbery or foliage, uh, to provide additional, someone see it better on this. There is existing shrubbery that would, that's already there that would block half of the garage siding. Uh, proposal is to put additional like herbivites that would go above ten to fifteen feet high. It would block that additional. I could come around towards the front, um, to, I guess, exclude that even a little bit more. Um, but I'll, I'll take your recommendation on that if, if that's what's needed. But we were looking to put that there because the, uh, uh, the way that the lawn or is shaped downward toward the center wouldn't allow us to put it any farther in there without, without making because unreasonable additions and, and modifications to both lawn or to support the garage. The leach field and the, um, septic being from the back area doesn't allow us to drive through that way. And there isn't enough room on the right side of the house for us to reasonably put new driveway into access that side. I'm only twenty-three point seven feet from the next property. I really can't do anything at that side. So this seems like the only feasible location. I know the last time I was in, I had shown, I know this is busy, but nonetheless, shown where the yard goes dropped and how significantly it drops about forty-two inches. Um, the distance that the garage would be, just to understand why it couldn't really go back much farther.
Hey, now, did you, it kinda shows that you met on the set, or is this something that you something?
That's not fun.
Those are fine.
So I know we had talked about the floodplain.
Yeah, right.
Do you want to just explain this?
Well, with that, what, propose. What we're gonna have to do, um, the applicant is gonna have to do is just put a approved floodgate into the structure in the side of that. He's not, all that means is that if floodwaters come to it, I mean, they will never get there, but to the, the height of which you would put them on the structure, you would need over a foot on there. Um, and I can work with you on those. It's a very simple process to, to install them. And depending on what type you want, we can get you to that point after your dad's gonna be the least of the major breaks for you with.
Okay.
Doing this, but it's not, the main thing that this shows is it's not in the AE, which is the regulatory floodway, which would need a no rise certificate, that, the, well, the zone, they both say AE on that, but that, the one with the red is the, the striped, which you would see this drainage easement essentially is notating that with these other ones, but this blew the, um, the special flood hazard area here only means that he has to put floodgates into it. And again, it's to, if there ever was a flood, it would, the hydrostatic pressure of it wouldn't crush it, but we're not getting really an area that won't have that happen, but at the same time.
That's look is, it wears a flood broom.
Yeah, if it gets, if it gets that high.
Please my word.
Again, this, this is the mapping, the GIS mapping. So you could go to the cut sheet from FEMA to, to get a true read of the, the way that this is. But based on this and where his structure is located, I'm assuming only a very small portion of it, based on this map, is really gonna even be into this, but.
Yeah, but you'd still have to do that.
Floodgates.
Because it comes into it. Now, did you also get a chance to clarify with Rob about the road?
There would have been no, there was nothing for the curb cut because there is an existing one.
Not necessarily the curb cut, but it is. Remember we talked about potentially if that road was ever to be expanded?
The.
And the road was, we were looking into it to see if it's for any reason. And no, they were good.
Yeah.
And did you have the road work done previously there?
Yeah, like twenty years ago, they had widened the road.
Yeah, and like, believe it or not, we were like, this is as far as we go.
The, yeah, and that's what, what.
Apparently why I wanted to look into it is if you go and look at our, uh, project's plan, that section is one of the proposed sections for potential residential properties should, we need the space for them, so I was just, I wanna be sure of it. Um, only because then, God forbid they go to widen the road. I don't wanna have you that worry about the garage.
And one of the, I wanted to be a driver. Well, I mean, it is the proposal. It is actually a portable unit. They would come in and bring it in there. It's not built on a, you know. Correct, yeah. So, um, in recent, what's happened recently is the, uh, residence next door was leveled. Um, now that it's an open lot, so it's caused us to think down the road, could we purchase that portion, that lot? And then maybe move this from this proposed site to the other side, to the other side in a, in a more favorable location. Yeah.
So you're thinking long-term wise?
Right, long-term. I need a place to park the car, whatever, thinks. Um, that's what this proposal is for, knowing that there could be potential for it to swell.
Jamie, do you have any questions for him?
I do not have any questions. I, I do want to thank the applicant for, uh, going through the, the paces on this. It was pretty critical. Um, it took a while, but I thank him for that.
You're welcome. Learned some stuff, so that helps.
Tim, Warren?
No, I was actually gonna say what Jamie said. I was gonna thank you for all you've done to make sure we have the right information for this. And you've based the combinations on the other addition, so. Appreciate that.
I saw your deck. Nice looking deck.
Thank you. Okay, you're the one that, my wife said, somebody stopped out, was looking out.
That was me.
And I, I said, I think it was Warren.
Yeah. Um, I have a question. Uh, the, your garage looks like it's parallel with the front of your house. Is that right?
Yes.
Good. Um, and from the back of the garage, which is the part closest to your house, how far is that parallel line to the front of your house? How far a distance is that?
That's. When we measured that, it says.
Yeah.
Or. Is that what that means? That about the side city line there?
Yeah, it's only a double T.
Okay, I mean, this, this is very small. Right. I don't know if this would show it a little bit better.
You can bring it up.
Okay. This, where the proposed garage is. It's, uh, those squares are two feet each, so it's, it looks to be already five feet.
According to this right here, it says nine feet, seven inches wide. See this? Right here. This is nine feet, seven inches.
Was it nine feet or four feet?
That's a nine.
Oh, okay, you're right.
It's five feet, one inch from the, right away. I'm looking at this.
Yeah.
This is between here and front. Yes.
The day.
Oh, the diagonal.
Yeah.
Um.
So he's looking.
I, I, I'm sorry. I thought you were looking at. So this eleven five is.
Two and a half feet, or two, four, four and a half feet, five feet, you think?
That's what, yeah, I assumed it was about five feet, so. And that was a thought I had yesterday. It was like, I guess it could potentially move back.
That's one thing.
Back another, if you recommend a couple feet back. I'm not real keen on garages being in fronts of houses, but, um, but I see where you are. And I do, I did notice the slope, which we're gonna have to build that up.
Either way, I'm gonna have to build it up.
It looks kind of even. Um, I was just wondering about the possibility of thinking that garage is moving back.
Yeah, I.
Would you need the space in between though, to, to mow or anything like that?
Well, that's, that was some of the consideration why I had it there is if, obviously to walk from the driveway into the back, some e-racks there or getting around that. I didn't, wasn't wanting to have it. Trying to back the car out of there.
I'm sorry.
Trying to back a car out of there is, you're, it's, you're not gonna be backing out towards the house. I, I don't think you'd have enough floor to do that.
No. So if you look at that street view, I have another thing to give consideration to. I'm good. How many is it?
How much?
I don't want, so. Right here. I'm lying beneath this, but because of the fact, so, so normally some of these other ones we've discussed were, there's a, a ask for a front garage.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's kind of been out in the open. I think that that natural, uh, kind of barrier there behind the.
Yeah.
Right, I think.
It's not gonna block all of it.
But it's gonna, it's gonna consider, considerably more than what some of the other ones we've discussed in the past.
I mean, they're, they're planning on putting trucks to cover.
Right, and that was my recommendation, where the pool, because they currently stop at the pool. And so if he puts everybody across to putting basically cover it.
Do you have a lot of deer out there?
Oh, yeah.
I see the footprints. Swear to God, I've never seen. They're riding to the ground. They love those.
They hang out up on top of the hill.
Well, I've seen in, in the back part of the yard where those woods go back there and footprints everywhere, but never.
So you just put some type of shrubbery that would be here, is this a possibility?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I did look that up. Your backyard backs up to Aspens, doesn't it?
Um, no, there is actually.
Another property.
A lot or something. The, the lot next door actually is this and goes behind that set.
Oh, okay.
My wife's mother tried to buy that. Missed out on that. I don't know how far, if this is my property, how far it continues past. But there is additional property and then Aspens. Cause there's a auto shop.
Right there.
Yes. I did see if you're coming from Green Lakes towards Route five, there is a lot of cover.
Yes.
That was what I was. To shield that. Yeah, at least this time of year. Right, and honestly, the root, sorry to interrupt you, the reason for the yard of the varieties is because that's more all season coverage. The roses are sharing, the leaves drop and it sticks. Some kind of whatever, I mean, it's yearly. Okay.
So just because.
But, yeah, definitely. Air resistant. They're resistant.
Okay.
Claire, do you have any questions?
Now. You said that the house to the right of you, um, back toward now?
Was just.
Oh, just.
Just.
Yeah. Okay.
It was condemned, correct? Was that what happened?
Yeah. Something, maybe. Well, I'm just gonna say it wasn't. I'll just say it was long time. Uh, but obviously it opens up options now that we didn't have before. But this time you don't own that property, so we have to consider what we have. But now would you, would you put stipulations, Warren, on to with arboribide, like, like we've done in the past, to that pool, to a specific height? Because I mean, they take some time to grow, but I wouldn't say like, hey, you gotta go up like eight foot or right, that's probably the one.
Be too restricting to put a number on it. Just quite some.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I knew they were listed as a faster growing, and if we bought, we would do the, I think, uh, six footers to, and then.
It just as you start right, the bigger ones, it starts getting up there.
Well, and I just think, I, I, I don't think we should tell that he has to put a specific one into something that a shrivel creates.
Right, well, a natural barrier.
Yeah.
Yep, the, the concern, the reason I thought the arboribides, well, it's because the power lines up above, and they're restricted height lines. It's a ten to fifteen foot
shrub.
Right, not thirty. Sorry, something you come home one day, natural risk got happened, oh, please your tree will break.
Alright, any questions? Are we good? Anybody online? Okay, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Get a second, circle, all in favor? Aye, anybody opposed? Alright, let's go through uh, oh, let's do discussion first. Um, I commend him because he has been back and has done everything we've asked him to do. Yeah. Um, with the survey, changing his plans, altering, um, I take that into account. Discussion? Tim? Alright, so let's go through the five criteria questions, the work in the term whether a variance request is a balance with or in the detriment to health, safety, wellness, and welfare of the community. First question, um, is whether the benefits offered they have that can be achieved by feasible alternatives to variance. He, I don't know, because he can't put in the back with a wheat field, can't put it on the other side.
One thing you do is push it back, but even then, you're gonna need the variance, you're not gonna be able to go back twenty-nine and a half feet.
No.
So.
And if we push it way back, you'd have a view from the step of the garage.
And it would just say a few feet, but.
Yeah.
I don't think, I think with cover. I think my answer to that, I think my answer to that, I'm going to say no, correct?
No, how about you, Claire?
No.
Warren?
No.
No. Okay. Whether undesirable change can be produced in character of neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties? No, it doesn't impact the character of anything, there's no?
No.
Okay, if it, does it fit in, if we look at the plans, I mean, really? That area? Okay. Whether the request variance is substantial?
Yes.
Yes. For the twenty-nine and a half feet.
Yes.
Or the forty? Yes. Okay. Whether, um, the variance has an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
The house getting part out.
Environmental, no. Physical. I don't know if physical conditions, because the neighborhood, uh, there's really no, you look around, is there any physical conditions that it impacts? I don't think so.
No.
No? Okay, no?
No, it's a place where it won't affect the, uh, little creek there, but because that's important.
Yeah.
So, I don't see a problem.
Right now, okay. Whether the alleged difficulty was self-created? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. The ZDA acting into consideration, the above five factors finds the benefit to the applicant does outweigh does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or community? Yes or no for that? The benefit to the applicant does outweigh that.
Goes out, goes outweighed detriment to the community.
Okay. Um, the ZDA further finds the variance for twenty-nine and, twenty-nine point five feet in the minimum variance that should be granted in order to preserve and protect the character of neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Um, there is an agreement that there is no significant impact on the environment, therefore I propose a type two action on secret and no further review is required. Based on our discussions, would someone make a motion to grant nine area variance for the applicant?
I'm sure, uh, to make a motion to grant the front yard set by variance of twenty-nine point five feet to vary. No loco. Pilled it. For the property located at eighty-five seventy-five Green Lakes Road, Fayetteville, New York, one three zero six six, tax map, uh, number zero eight two dot one dash zero two dash fourteen point one, this variance is being granted for the construction of a twelve foot by twenty foot garage.
You have a second?
Wait.
Sorry, with the condition?
With the condition of a natural barrier.
I second that.
With the telephone pole and driveway.
Yes, yeah, thank you, needed to know where that was going to be, and, and, and can you explain what you mean by natural barrier? Consisting of?
Strawberry.
Okay. Thank you.
You replace it, it dies.
Pole and garage.
But is it, John, are you saying the shrubbery needs to come off, right, should this garage, where, um, by the line?
I was thinking, I was thinking that from the telephone pole, which is where the natural shrubbery is, or currently that is now, over to where the driveway is.
Okay.
Would provide ample shielding. Um, if you were to take that same space and move it back a few feet, I don't think that would hurt.
Okay.
You know?
Alright, okay.
Just, but the space is what I was thinking.
Okay, I, I just didn't know, um, I just want clarification that I need to come all the way to the, uh, driveway line for it. You know, that's allowed.
I would say just. I think just to cover the garage itself, like to feel the.
Garage itself, so if you don't see it, the.
Right, you, you don't want to mess with the, uh, with the site distance or the ability to, uh, to pull out.
That was my other concern, thank you.
So just the garage itself, you don't, yeah, it's your, just, and then, okay, Claire, second it?
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? It's finally.
I'm smiling as well, thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah, thank you, we appreciate you coming back and being very patient.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Hey, after the third camera roll coming back, I'll figure out the last thing.
It's not.
Yeah, it's, it's very strict.
Who built your deck?
Okay.
Don't, don't forget your coat.
Who, who built your deck?
Built your deck.
Um, it's commercial with modern homes and multiple.
Nice deck.
Yeah, it looks good.
Alright, other business?
Have they turned on that other home?
Anything for next month?
As of right now, no.
Don't forget that next Wednesday is our planning symposium then.
Yes.
Wednesday.
Come on, for you guys.
Well.
Right, Claire?
Next Wednesday.
Claire does, Claire's not on your symposium, I gotta get her on with the stuff.
That's right.
What time do we have to be there? Eight AM?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
Oh. Oh, okay, but to answer your question very fast, as of right now, we have nothing for next month. When's the deadline?
Next Monday.
So we may not have a meeting in people?
Why would you say that?
Now you're gonna.
Jamie, thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much for putting up with me, appreciate it, take care, bye-bye.
Oh, I'm just, wait, you get.
I didn't adjourn the meeting.
I was getting a little.
Yes, can I get a second? All in favor? Alright.